...and ones on village business at Lake George.
Oh.
So, the meeting order please rise, we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I have a presentation to make to former trustee Moore. I'll come down, Stanley. I'll come down. This is presented to Stanley Edmore in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated service to the residents of Ross's Point, or the village of Ross's Point, I should say. Village trustee, October 1989 to 2001. Stanley, thank you for your service.
And I would like to thank the board and all the department heads and the wonderful people we have in this village, but most of all, if it wasn't for our good department heads, each one, I don't want to mention any names, but we have, well, I will mention Bev. For all the years I've known her, the 22 years I was on the other park there, judged and so forth, and that, but I am the treasurer and all of yous. I really appreciate it, and I want to thank yous all, and especially all the good department heads, because else, with the good department heads, we wouldn't have a good village. So, I want to thank you, and I certainly appreciate everything.
You want the spot, Stanley?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I want...
(applause)
Thanks again, Stanley.
Thank you. And I want to thank the cameraman, he's been very faithful all the years that I've known. (laughing) Thank you all.
We had a bid result, annual refuge bid.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
We had only two bidders, one was Cooper Trucking, they bid $409.16 a month with a $20 stop at the fire station and $30 stop at the civic center during the Fourth of July festivities, and Northern Sanitation, $454.69 a month with a $68 stop at the civic center and a $56 stop at the fire station during the Fourth of July.
Please, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Cooper Trucking for a bid for the annual refuge all.
I have a motion, let's second.
Second.
Motion made in second, end of discussion. There being no discussion, all those in favor, all those in favor of vote by the usual sign of aye. Oh, I'm having a good time tonight. Saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I hope in my meeting to comment from the public tonight at this time, if anyone wishes to address the board, go ahead, Paul.
None on the agenda, so I figure I'll shoot my breeze quick and get, I am saddened slightly to announce it, we got a notification from one of the Sunday Hot Lock's secretaries at the park that we did not get one of the awards awarded grants. No reason was given, but apparently we did not get the park in our creation grant. However, there is a glimmer of hope, we had not got a finalization on the Department of State grant as of yet, that is still being investigated. One way or the other, it is not a terrible thing, it's not, it's actually a blessing in disguise.
It's on the agenda of the sky.
(laughing) I strongly recommend the board, that the board take time to thoroughly review the last application we put in for the Lakefront redevelopment revitalization. Be aware that you're committing dollars to this, be aware that if we had got the money this year and were expected to stop spending it, you have no money in the budget to do it. So, let's plan a little better. There is good news, or semi-good news, there are three rounds of grants being announced June 1st, and the plan is to take our basic grant application, and we have it right now, it's all compiled, by changing maybe two, three, four pages, adjusting some numbers, we will be applying for three different grant levels, because they, as I understand, our needs would qualify in all three of them. We will proceed in that direction unless I'm told to stop. The announcement will be made of these grants being available on June 1st. My recommendation to the board is review and understand, this is not totally free. If you want what we want to do out there, start planning ahead. The other half of this is pretty good when you think about it, we should be opening bids also June 1st, rebid for the bathroom facilities, and today I just spoke to the engineer tonight, we already have, three applications have been picked up, or three bid packages have been picked up, none of which have bid before, so maybe we'll be dealing more with reality numbers than what came out as the first one. The design has been changed from cement block and brick exterior to poured concrete architecturally designed. Now, they put a couple of coats of coating, a color on the exterior, and then they can actually make it look like stone. I think that's a better way to go, it should be less expensive. The biggest problem being that there are so many school plans in this northern area that you cannot find a mason that will commit to being here, and those you do find, they're all driving BMWs and Cadillacs. That's why the bids were so high on the last package. Nobody had foreseen this. In conversation with the engineer this evening, we were trying to discuss where do we go from here? To date, we have not spent half, we have not spent half of the first $200,000 that we received. Probably with the bathroom facilities and the docks that we're purchasing for the boat rent, and also for the sheriff's department's boat behind the village office, we will be close to $100,000 spent, which still leaves a nice chunk of money to play with. I'm going to need some direction, my thoughts are, and as well as the engineers', if we do, we're doing a little bit of boat rent this year, I think we would be wasting money if we just tried to finish up the whole boat rent deal this year. I mean, obviously, there's certain things that we could do inexpensively, the village can technically contribute its part in that area. We would like our, I'm suggesting to the board that they allow us, or suggest that they agree with us, that we start looking for cheap piling contractors. We now, I'm pleased to announce after some extremely amazing gymnastics and nasty phone calls, we have a permit, a usage permit for the state dock and the three boxes of land, which also states that that permit will be in force until the deed is passed to the village of Ross's Point, which is expected, I'm not even going to give you a date because I've been drawn out of the water too many times, but they said it's going to happen this year. Basically, what it is, the documentation is all completed, the deed is prepared to be signed, all they've got to do is stop the attorney general from politicking and getting to sign the papers, at which time, the mayor will then write a check and sign the other half of the deed, and send them $500, and we'll own it, well, technically, we own it now. We took the appropriate steps, and it is under our liability insurance at this particular time. That was part of the deal. We're talking about putting piling as a support all around the state dock to build our, if we get that part in, it'll be relatively inexpensive to build the rest of it. That's the way we'd like to go, and unless, again, the board has other thoughts on this, your wish is my command, but frankly, I think it's the smarter way to go, there will be some adjustments made at the boat rent, we'll have a bathroom there before the end of this summer, we'll have new docks. If we pre-plan and spend a little bit of the money, we may be, you know, they already know our basket's pretty full right now, and just like in church, can't keep shoving the same basket of the same people all the time, so if we empty a little bit, maybe it'll encourage them to bump up, the bump us up higher on the next round of grants. Also, be aware that we have applied through FEMA for approximately $270,000 for an required bumper. That announcement, as I understand, should not be long in coming.
July.
Hmm?
July.
Yeah, it's not, you know, FEMA, for some reason, FEMA acts quickly, which is nice. I think, I don't know, the mayor, the proposal that we sent and the paperwork, I think we get a pretty good argument, we're trying to replace a 1967 property. And the deal with that is 90-10, 90% federal money, 10% Ross's Point. We estimate the cost of $300,000, which probably is a little bit high. If we get it, and we don't spend it all, we'll have to return some of it, but conversely, our investment in it will be lesser too. It isn't really discouraging, actually, I don't think we would have any time to do anything with the money if we had it this year anyways. And understand, you don't literally get the money, we spend it and they reimburse it. And as I looked at the budget, there really isn't too much to reimburse with this year. So, I, but I do strongly recommend that all board members look at what we're voting. The concept is wonderful, but understand, when you say go, you're committing yourself to dollars, and if you're committing yourself to dollars, something's got to be a next year credit for this. One way or the other, whether we get a grant or not, we should continue to move forward. Our show of good faith on the part of the village, by investing money in it, will almost guarantee a grant, and if not a grant, maybe a member item. So, that's where we're sitting with what we're doing. Oh, we did have a newspaper interview today about the project, if you read about it in the Champlain Connections newspaper, I guess the new weekly coming out of Plaster, you'll know what it's all about. Okay?
Thank you, Paul.
And thank you for your time.
Anybody else want to address the board this time? If not, we close this part of the meeting, or you have a chance at the end of the meeting. Okay. Minutes of previous meetings. Is any additions or deletions? Not, and entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. Our son, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we do not.
Make a motion that we accept the bills as written?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Correspondents?
We have just one piece of correspondence directed toward the board. It's from a resident of State Street. "I'm putting in a complaint about stray cats, could you please get rid of them? I live at 67 State Street, and there are a bunch of stray cats that stay behind the residents of 70 State Street across from my home. For over two years now, I've put up with them. They urinate all over the back porch and garage, they climb all over my vehicles, the smell is very strong. I just planted my vegetable garden and flowers, they keep digging it up to go to the bathroom. I'm tired of spending money for seeds that get destroyed. The people across the street feed them, but they don't claim them. You should pass a bill that cats should be licensed and on leashes, just like dogs. Thank you, Beverly Ducharme, Hector LeBouning, Jackie and Scott Taylor."
And we had no choice, we thought it for one, I could go for another. I gave the one on Rose Avenue for taking care of, people seem to be well satisfied.
So, shall we turn this over to the plate?
Yes, please. I'll give that to Bob, tell him, I guess, tell him to proceed like he did with the last one.
And that's all the person's question.
Reports of mayor and trustees. Discussion on the authorization, village attorney contract. Does any board member have anything to add or delete in that contract? And I need a motion to be authorized to sign it, I believe it's the same as the last year.
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the village attorney's contract?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Discussion on signing contract with the village engineer. Same thing, any additions or deletions? Did you get it up your price much this year? I didn't read this yet. I got to tease you, Bob, you know.
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the village engineer's contract also.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, there'll be a special meeting tomorrow night, 7:00 at the village hall. Meeting is to pass a resolution for the Clean Water Ban Act, we have to have four member board members, we have to have four, these four members there. Mr. Huffrel will be back from Lake George tomorrow, so we can have that meeting. Okay. Sale of surplus material, this surplus material, rowboat. Wow! Any motion to sell it?
Make a motion that we sell the rowboat to Eugene Claire for $211?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. I need a motion to authorize the public publication of a legal notice to go invent for generators, want an emergency generator for the power station, and emergency generator for the public works building. We received a PMA grant from both of those, we, our cost is, I think, 25%. I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's somewhere around $70,000 grant that we got, for both of them.
So, more?
Any motion?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Discussion on water front revitalization grant, Paul was alluding to it. We'd have gotten a grant from the Toddland Parks, we were committed to about $400,000. It would be in labor, material supply, or actual money. The grant was for $900,000. If we want to pursue this, then we have to make the commitment.
For the Lakefront?
For the Lakefront. We don't necessarily have to do it tonight, I'm just bringing this up so that you think about it, the other two trustees can talk about it. I'm not sure we need, excuse me, put it in the budget, like, for next year, unless the budget officer tells us otherwise, if we have to go out to, to, for money, we could bomb that, couldn't we, our son? If we needed to. It's just something to keep in mind for next year's budget, and if you want Paul to pursue these, and we have to be ready to expend funds, like he says, nothing's free. I was sort of shocked when Paul called me, told me, actually, we never looked at, I don't know, at the item six, which was in that grant. So, it's just something to keep in mind, and probably next meeting or the meeting afterwards, when we start considering going for other grants, that we, you know, put back in your mind, next year, if we should get, be lucky enough to receive one of these grants, then we're going to have to pass some funds there. And the last thing I picked that got on my agenda is June 14th, the fire departments have the blood drive from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., all are welcome, don't be chicken. And that's it for me. Trustee Menard?
My first item on my agenda is MEUA Northern Regional Meeting. It's on June 7th at the Tupperlake Country Club. I believe at this time, no one is going.
Nope. Unless you want to go, Bob?
Well, we should send somebody out, who, if you want to join, you might go. It's just a regional meeting, it's a one day ordeal.
Yeah, just that day.
Let me ask, see if a couple of days later, I might go.
I can't go anyway, because I'll be on top of the services.
I'll make a motion that we authorize one person to vote for this regional meeting, because, I mean, it's the 21st now, so we got somebody within the next day or two to get reservations.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's not overnighter, it's just, it's all one day, it's not, you don't really have to have that.
They typically have a tour of their municipal facilities of the electrical substation and their stuff up there.
It would be good, you know, if you put up all the line and you like to go, because they can go up there and see what that $13,000 line is all about.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Bobby, how many people?
I'd like to say two if I could. It's, what is it, I said $25 a piece for the day, it's just, it's just a one day ordeal, if, if they even decide to go. A lot of times you ask them, depending how work goes, they might not want to go. You know, you're not really committing yourself saying that there's going to be two.
It's on a Thursday.
Got a motion, two? Got a motion, second? Any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Presentation by Kurt up there that day.
My second item, discussion on the award demolition contract for 94 State Street. We had three bids, following quotes, for Randy Bedard Excavating, $21,800, Overe Trucking and Excavating, $11,999, D. Richard and Sons, $20,375. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we award the bid to Overe Trucking and Excavation for $11,999.
Have a second? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Uh, Bob, that Bob, in that bid, he must provide us with a certificate of insurance?
Certificate of Insurance for Liability and Work Discompensation. That's before he, before he gets demolition permit, if he doesn't have that...
Then he can't do it.
He can't do it, then I would assume that the next bidder would get it, the next lower bidder would get it, I don't know how you handle that, whether you would make, whether you would make a motion on that tonight, or wait until the next meeting, I don't know.
How can we handle that, though? Just in case.
Do we have to go up for a bid?
Well, I, I don't think you have a big problem, because this is supposed to start tomorrow.
Will start tomorrow, it'll be done in 10 days.
And we can contact the village attorney first thing in the morning, and you have a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. So, you could turn around and award it to someone else, but the quote that went out specifically stated that he had to have that insurance, so he's well aware of that.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I'm saying is, if that's awarded to him, I, I think that we should have a copy.
Oh, he get it, oh, he get that.
When you get a copy.
Before they start work, any contractor has to provide us with that.
They have, it says there, must supply, must supply. See the way I write them, I want copies of all that stuff, protect the village.
Okay, that was my only concern.
So, they weren't planning on starting, somebody said they were planning on starting tomorrow, they won't really be able to do that, because they have to show the certificate of, right?
Starting tomorrow could be just showing us...
That they have the certificate.
Pay the work, and then he's got to get a demolition permit.
So, what are the chances that tomorrow night, the meeting, it won't be addressed? If, if he doesn't have the insurance, it will be addressed tomorrow, so that it can be started faster?
It's possible he won't come in tomorrow, I mean, we'll notify him that it's been awarded, but he's supposed to start tomorrow, but how do you make somebody, you know, if he'd come right tomorrow, you know, understand?
He has time.
If he doesn't get it, get a permit tomorrow, you say he ain't going to get the bid, tell him that point blank. So, who's that?
Well, unless that was specified in the letter, you can't do that.
It says he will start tomorrow.
Then, then he has to.
Start immediately after the bids are awarded, it's specified.
Then he has to.
Yeah.
He doesn't?
I made sure.
I mean, he's always complied with us before.
Yes.
So, I really don't have any reason to take you long.
Okay.
We'll know tomorrow.
So, that meeting draws it?
No, the meeting is after the village attorney.
Is it open in the public, though?
Yes.
Always.
Public, yes, it's a public meeting. Any other discussion?
Can I just ask you the second better one?
Dennis Richards.
You can have a copy of it there exactly if you want, and it's open in the public conference.
You should put in that motion that the cost will be applied to the taxes.
I mean, yes, the cost of the demolition will be applied to the taxes, and then mine.
I don't know if this is the place to ask that, but when you say that it's applied to the taxes, what happens with that land after, do you know who owns that land, or...
Whoever owns the building.
They do, or it could be insurance?
Or if the bank, if it goes back on the bank, then the bank will pay. Or whoever buys the parcel of land will have to pay off the taxes.
That rate?
At that rate.
Okay, thank you.
You change your motion?
Yes.
I have just, I have another question, so tomorrow, if he doesn't come in with the necessary paperwork, we will then award the bid to someone else tomorrow night, is that...
If the village attorney says that's how we do it, we check the hand before, you know, before we go any further.
Okay, so I'm just not clear on what you amended your motion to do.
Just that the, the cost prices of the demolition will go onto the taxes.
Okay.
So, whoever buys the land, or whoever pays off the taxes.
We don't lose any money.
Right.
No, I understand it, but I was just unclear as to what was going to take place tomorrow.
The bids are closed, though, you're not opening up tomorrow night to new bidders?
No, no. Ken?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
My third item is to authorize the court to publicly publish a legal notice for public hearings for the zoning boards of appeal. I'm not sure what, do we have a date unknown at all, Bob, or Carol said this morning, June 18th?
I think she said the 18th, and I'm not sure.
This is totally, put to the zoning board.
Well, because the 18th, Tim, they had a zoning board, he was...
So, there'll be a public hearing on the 18th.
What is that, for special use?
Got a motion, a motion second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 So, opposed, motion carried.
I vote aye.
My next item is a resolution for electric bad debt, whereas certain customer accounts are deemed uncollectible by the village, and whereas it is advisable to write off these accounts off our books, therefore, it be resolved that the attached list of accounts be written off effective May 31st, 2001. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and the question was put to a rule call vote. And the question was put to a roll call vote.
I actually have a question. Haven't done this before. Are these all rental properties?
Yes.
No. Myers wasn't...
Well, no. The first group.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd always thought they were all rentals.
And I'm not sure what, do we have any sort of policy on that?
The policy is...
They cannot, they cannot...
They cannot reapply.
Cannot reapply for electricity until they pay the LCN bill. Is that correct, Arson?
That's correct, yes.
And there's nothing that we can do to collect on any of you?
It sounds familiar, that.
We've tried everything.
We do this every year.
I do a slow burn every year, Mr. Penfield, I do not like doing this. I don't think it's right. You pay your bill, I pay my bill, we pay our bills. You write off, you know, some of these you can't help. Corporate stuff. Bob, if...
I have a question. I understand according to our village law, that the electric is under a resolution by the board. What does it say in that resolution? Did it blame the law again? What stated that resolution?
I don't understand.
As far as collecting, paying the bills and all that. I think it's under section 54, I don't have the book. Yeah, it's under section 54, I guess it would be. I think it's 54, and it says under electric. I believe it's 54.
The rules and regulations for the electric department are a separate book, because they're too big for the codebook. That's all that is.
But it says it is a resolution. It says by resolution of the board. Is it 54 missing?
It's 64.
I'm sorry, 64. You have the foreword.
Sixty.
Does it say by resolution of the village board?
Yes, it does.
So, whatever that resolution is, is how you will proceed to collect your bills. If the state's in there, you will collect the bills, and maybe whatnot.
I think we're also governed by the state, and that's...
Public service commission.
That's kind of, that's kind of the overhand that we, we look at this option numerous times.
And if you will recall, our village attorney met with us many, many meetings just on this one subject, and reviewed what you're talking about, and also reviewed the possibility of attaching this to your taxes, like your water and sewer charges do. And that was pursued, but we cannot do that.
It's very illegal.
Yes.
This issue will going to be addressed next week by Mr. Clark and myself at the municipal, or not by me, Public Service Commission, and it's going to be there. And we are going to put this, I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous. I know, there's nothing you can do when somebody goes bankrupt, or that thing. There's nothing you can do for that. But, when people leave town and not pay their bills, we should be able to collect them. And we should be able to go out and grab them right out of broke, and that's just the way I feel. I'm sorry.
There is one village in, and if you will recall, we did get this legislation. There is one village in the state of New York that passed legislation that does attach these, puts a lien on that, on that property. But, that hasn't been challenged. And if it is challenged, then that is... So, we would, we really shouldn't do that.
No.
We have tried every, everything.
We addressed that last year.
Right.
If there's any consolation, if eliminating the two bankrupt companies on the bottom, that would be the lowest figure in many, many years.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I understand that.
Actually, they're on one date this year.
And there's nothing.
Nothing, you know, it...
We tried that.
We tried.
We tried that. And that does not work, or illegal, or is that...?
The question is, we've tried in the past, and basically what you do, we do all the work yourself. If you do happen to collect the money, and most of the time, if you did collect the money, it's because of the, the party who's back into the village, and they are forced to pay that bill. If you have to pay part of that back to the collection, you see, they get nothing.
So, we just try to keep these in record, and if they ever come back into the village, they have to pay the same thing, isn't it?
We've taken people small penitents courts too, and that doesn't work either, because they won't live in one time for over $1,000, it's a big cost payment.
But the entire top of the list is a, all of rental situations. Top of the list.
That's, that's a, I would say 99.9 percent of time, it's the majority of the people that we do it on. You know, it's a, it's a standard bookkeeping entry that we have to make, and it is a budgetary item. You know, I don't agree with people not paying their bills either, but it is part of normal business in the university, like the department. You compare us to other, other municipalities in the state, you'll find that we are very low down the range of accounts that we actually have.
And what's the timeframe, Arson, that these are outstanding over?
This is the past, this past year.
Is it the entire year?
Yeah. Basically, what we're doing, eliminating from the computer, is we just accrue interest upon interest, and set an amount of bill, and you're not collecting it. Bill be, be returned, or...
Yeah, I understand the process of what's going on.
What do we have in place, Arson, in terms of collection throughout the course of the year? In other words, all of these obviously are not from a single month in a given year, but an ongoing situation where someone is not paying their bill.
If you're forty-five days in arrears, you're gonna shut us out, shut off the rest of it. And depending on the time of year, you'll get pulled, or how they, or when they're put on.
The longer they get, probably.
That's how someone would be so hard.
That's one of the things we want to talk to public service about. We don't have any rights. The customer does. And we want to find out, since we are under their covenants now, before we're under the power authority. Power authority governs this, of what we do right now. But now, with public service, we might be able to change this. That's one of the things we want to try to do.
And there's certain rules and regulations.
Certain, if you're outside to vote for gas and electric, you pay your bill, or you wouldn't have power.
There's rules and regulations too, whether or not there's entrance in the household, or disabled, or people who...
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
My next item, I would like to request an executive session for village personnel.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, and a roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And my last item is, I would like to, I'd like to read a little statement. I'd like to remind all the residents in the village that we have a leash law in the village. In recent weeks, the board has gotten what I consider too many complaints about loose dogs. And the complaints are still coming in. I would like to ask that the residents please, please keep track of their pets, so they aren't wandering into other people's yards, or wandering into streets unattended. There are a lot of people walking in the streets this time of year, and some of them are scared to death of dogs, whether they are friendly or not. I would just like to ask everyone to please be considerate of other people's feelings, and to keep your pets on the leash. And that's all I have for the season.
Thank you, Trustee Menard. Trustee Penfield.
I just have one item. I would just like to offer congratulations to Nelson Barcombe, Clarence Ashline, and Mike Riley for their certificates of attendance at the Northern New York Water Works Conference. Each of them will receive Department of Health contact hours, 4.75, and 4.5 contact hours to the DEC. I think it's something that's very important, and they should be congratulated for their attendance and their completion of the conference.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. The other two on this side are among the missing, Brian's on vacation, and Trustee Huckrow's at the Main Street Conference in Lake George. And I have one other thing, and I forgot what it was. Oh, on my meeting in Washington. Unfortunately, the two senators canceled out Tuesday afternoon. So, we didn't have a meeting with them, but it's imperative, and if, how does that, this thing... I'm gonna sit down and talk with them next Thursday on this. It's imperative that the Municipal Electric Association get their concerns into the Senate and the House of Power energy bills, because there's a lot of things that are being left out. There's no consideration for tax intention for municipalities, for one thing, on these power bills. Re-licensing of hydroelectric plants is a major, major concern to us, because if they don't get relicensed, we might be burdened very deeply. So, there'll be some discussions with that. The process, they're trying to streamline it from Washington, which is not a bad thing. I think the municipal electric is going wrong with that, but, you know, Washington. And anyway, I returned the fund, the trip, my, the village, the tickets, because we didn't have a meeting, so I didn't think it was right to pay for my week's vacation with my daughter. That's that. Hopefully, they are talking about scheduling Sunday later in June, but not sure I'll ever make that. With that, tab 11 is...
I would just like to thank the ladies who were doing the planting today. As usual, they're doing a very nice job. I think the village flower gardens look very nice. And I also would like to remind all the boys and girls in the village that have basketball nets on, that they put right next to the village street, please bring them off the street a little bit when you see we're doing construction there. We had an accident that we backed over one. Please get them off the road when you see our village trucks there. We can't replace everyone, and, and, you know, they're really in the way. So, I would ask them off, please move them off the streets. Thank you.
Arson?
I don't have anything.
Bobby?
Yeah, we got one thing. We talked about this before, George. We gotta do something about the branches. We gotta stop it, so far, we just haul in way too many in there, George. We can't, we can't handle it all.
Well, what's sad is, is that somebody hires a contractor, comes, cuts tree down. In that contract, it says that he has to haul the branches and stuff away, and they're hauling them down here. And I don't think that's right.
We just, we can't take it.
They're for the residents to use, not to have a contractor come in and dump, you know, two, three big truckloads, and then just dump them anywhere they want to.
The clippings and the, and the leaves and stuff are fine. We got that under control pretty well, but do you see what we got for brushing one weekend?
Yeah.
Thirty, forty truckloads of brush. There's just not that much brushing around this point.
No way. Well, I see trucks are still comfortable around this point there.
Yeah. I'd just like to close it down maybe till September, and then, you know, because we gotta pick up in the fall. Just, just, just the brush pile. Not the clippings and the other stuff, it's fine. But just the brush pile itself.
It's getting out of control. I mean, we just got going after the hunters.
Oh, they need to sneak in the big wood, you know, that they don't want. And we, you know, just, we can't burn it. That stuff that's eight, 10, 12 inches around, we can't burn it. Just not enough fire there. Plus, our box is getting pretty full there.
The board mind make a decision tonight?
I'll make a motion that we close it till September.
I'll second that.
I mean, we're running into problems every year.
Yeah, we do.
Every year, it's the same thing, same thing. We tell people, "Don't bring your big brush in." I mean, and probably for the most part, it's not the village residents, it's people coming from outside.
Well, you know...
Someone more, but...
Like, we announced that we were gonna pick up leaves and brush for one week. We picked up for five weeks. Every day, every day, every day. People see us go by and pick up brush, and they run right back, you know, two minutes after we gone by, and load it right up again. Put it all out one time. We strumming out for five weeks picking up.
Yeah, we've done more than...
You know, I mean, I think we're more than fair. I mean, I like, you know, I like to see the village picked up and not have the stuff hanging all over. And that's what we got it for. And for people to be able to bring that down in the spring of the year, to clean out their yards, and be able to, you know, burn it up and get rid of that.
I think for the most part, if we close it down, that's gonna get rid of the people coming from outside town.
Yeah.
People in the village are gonna come see you, they're gonna come see, they're gonna come see one of us and ask if they can...
I'll go sign up, no more brush. Till September.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. That it, Bob?
That's it.
Bob? Doug?
Just on water, I'm hoping at the next board meeting to have a resolution for the pass to vote bid for the water storage tank, on the water zebra muscle project. We're having a big week, as we're gonna be laying the chemical injection line down in the water before Memorial Day, before the heavy boat traffic sets in, so that we'll be able to chip away at that project slowly, comfortably, for the rest of the summer. And on the sewer project, the design engineer, physical associate is due to call us and come over here any day now to review that project, and whether it's happening.
That it? Thank you, sir. Anybody from the public would like to address the board this time? There ain't nobody wanting to talk to us. Aye. Entertain a motion for recess.
So, move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
We are in...